Good morning and welcome back. Welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. I have a meeting announcement. Council will be meeting in a hybrid session until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue to register and speaking virtually as there will be a limited number of seats available in the council chambers. Will the clerk please call or take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we joined from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have one from Councilman Wilson to be read into the record, or to be read, I'm sorry, and one from myself.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1781. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Sunday, August 22nd, 2021 to be Kenneth W. Kenny Manton Senior Day in our city of Pittsburgh. And Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 1783. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend and congratulate Eagle Scout Sage Emanuel Yanov for his outstanding achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declared to be Eagle Scout Sage Emanuel Yanov Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The proclamations are approved. Thank you, everyone. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please, and the first and only registered speaker I have is Dr. Miller. Dr. Ronald Miller. Good morning, Dr. Miller. Welcome back.
Ni hao. Dr. Ronaldin Miller, 40 Bells River Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Tao, Liangji, Shenty. Now, I'm the Global Intelligence Society candidate for Mayor of Pittsburgh 2021. The GIS is not a political party. GIS is, we are, any or all of us who think that access to the best information from a minimum of 21 primary disciplines is necessary for good governance. An example is the current debacle revolving around Afghanistan. In 2019, I created the Global Intelligence Information Network and the National Intelligence Information Network for all of us to get optimal information and intelligence. The GIIN and NIIN bypass older and newer media. Let me repeat that. Doesn't connect with, depend upon, print media, televised media, or even the internet for transmission. To be part of the GIS framework or use the GIIN or NIIN, contact me at CGSII.rlm.globalintelligence@gmail.com. I invite all of you citizens and councilors to come to the CGSII GIS Bottega. Your city and your country needs you here in this room. This is your room. This is our room. We need your intelligence and we need the best information that you can offer us, and so do all of you. Again, this is our room, and I invite you citizens to return to this room to contribute to our democracy.
Thank you, Ronald Dr. Miller. And our next order of business is presentation of papers. There being no further speakers, registered speakers. And Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Can I have Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess?
No new papers, Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Please stand when you do it.
Just assisting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilman Coghill has papers. Oh, you do have papers, Councilman?
He does.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1733, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title for Public Places and Properties, Article One, Public Right-of-Way, 11 Parks and Playground and 14 Public Buildings by adding language to require that new street lights and lighting in newly constructed and renovated city-owned facilities and park comply with dark sky lightning principles. Bill Number 1734, Resolution Vacating a Portion of California Avenue from Kirk Brad Street to Conkle Avenue, a Portion of Setridge Street from Lamont Way to Kirk Brad Street, Dahlway from Conkle Avenue to California Avenue, and an unnamed alley from Dahlway to California Avenue in the 21st Ward, 6th Council District of the City. Bill Number 1735, Resolution Granting Unto 55935 Baum Boulevard Associates LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and you said their own cost and expense, to install a new concrete ramp and landing with handrails to access the main entrance at 5935 Baum Boulevard in the 8th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill Number 1736, Resolution Granting Unto ACR Walnut LP their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new accessible entry ramp at 5743 Walnut Street in the 7th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 1737, Resolution Granting Unto 429 Forbes Associates LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to reconstruct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing electrical vault at 429 Forbes Avenue in the 2nd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1738, Resolution Granting Unto Jason and Laura Rock their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new retaining wall and decorative safety fence at 714 Amberson Avenue in the 7th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 1739, Resolution Granting Unto Bakery Square Holdings LP their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 6425 Penn Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill Number 1740, Resolution Granting Unto Millwood Manor LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting light fixture at 845 Western Avenue in the 22nd Ward, 1st Council District. Bill Number 1741, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Windsor Avenue-Carnahan Road intersection project, providing for the payment of costs not to exceed $3,250,000 in increase of $251,000 to increase the project's construction budget. The original agreement was authorized by Resolution 850 of 2017. Bill Number 1742, Resolution Amending Resolution 127 entitled 322 and 324 Arlington Avenue in the 18th Ward, Experience Land Movement That Threatens the Safe Maintenance and Operation of the Street for Public Travel. In order to stabilize the slope and restore the street, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure must acquire the property at 322 and 324 for construction of a retaining structure. Resolution 746 authorized the acquisition. This amendment to Resolution 746 amends the JDE account information to reflect the 2020 operating budget. This resolution is to authorize the acquisition of the property at a cost not to exceed $10,000 while the project costs will be legislated separately and paid for by the capital budget to update the operating budget year for 2021. Bill Number 1743, Resolution Authorizing the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a commodities agreement with Intel Light Products for purchase of traffic control equipment through December 31st, 2022. Intel Light Products is the sole manufacturer of the traffic control technology that is compatible with the Keytron system and allows the city to replace our older traffic control technology and up-to-date equipment as older equipment continues to fail. Bill Number 1744, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a license agreement with Fitz Conservatory and Botanical Garden for the city facility known as the Garden Center for a period of 10 years and annual rental fee of $1 per year with the possibility of renewal. Bill Number 1745, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the Shade Tree Commission using funds of the Shade Tree Trust Fund controlled by the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Tree Pittsburgh to develop, launch, promote, and manage a significant tree registry at a cost not to exceed $50,000 over a two-year period with an option to renew.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Could I ask your indulgent and Councilman Coghill's on 1742, since we have such a light agenda tomorrow, can we waive the rules on 742 and get that moving?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They will appear on tomorrow. Thank you, Councilman. And now we move on. Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have a lot to read here. Councilwoman Deb Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Councilwoman, good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1746, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Proposed City of Pittsburgh Department of Public Works 4th Division Maintenance Facilities located at the 400 Block of Matthews Avenue. Bill Number 1747, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Harvard-Beatty Housing Project 205 through 233 North Beatty Street. Bill Number 1748, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 2920 New Beaver Avenue, 27th Ward. Bill Number 1749, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Big Toms Barber Shop at 2178 Center Avenue. Bill Number 1750, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for work in connection with the Winchester Drive Project. Bill Number 1751, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with the PWSA for work in connection with the Nobles Land Project. Bill Number 1752, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with PWSA for work in connection with the Fleury Way Project. Bill Number 1753, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 32 entitled Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $2,803,480 to the City of Pittsburgh's Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by the city by increasing the capital equipment acquisition line item by $7,706,600.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Councilwoman Gross, I have a waiver of Rule 8 for Bills 1746, 1750, 1751, and 1752. Did you want to make that motion? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't catch those on the agenda several days ago. Are they new, maybe? Let me look at those bills while I'm scrolling on my screen. Sure, I'm happy to make the motion, but since we're talking, I will, may I circle around with Councilwoman Strasburger maybe after the meeting to talk about the PWSA bills that are new to me?
Yes.
Happy to talk.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Much, thank you. Motion to waive Rule 8 on Bills 1746, 1750, 1751, 1752 so that they may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee. Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. But when you guys are here, please stand when you can hand your papers.
Are we not handing papers anymore? We all have papers.
Thank you, Madam President.
The papers aren't there. No one, okay. Thank you.
It's just the ritual.
We'll make sure they're here for the next time.
Thank you.
I just don't want to change what we do. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilman Kraus has a paper.
Oh, you have a paper? Okay, I apologize.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1754, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh City Code at Title V, Traffic Article VII Parking, Chapter 543 Parking Meters, Parking Meter Zones and Rates, Subsection B and C by making dynamic hour parking enforceable at any time as determined by the City Treasurer.
Madam President?
Councilman Kraus.
This was the interim approval that members were kind enough to sign while we were away. So may I please waive the rule so that we could put this on tomorrow's standing committee agenda, please?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill, committee agenda. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1755, Resolution Amending Resolution 112 which authorized the Mayor and City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with McGrell and Associates for professional consultant services in connection with billboard tax litigation by increasing the total spend by $170,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $363,200. Bill Number 1756, Resolution Amending Resolution 223 by amending the existing professional services agreement with Hawk, McKeon, and Sisnesdak for legal services in connection with PUC matters by increasing the total spend by $150,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $200,000. Bill Number 1757, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $50,000 payable to Community Justice Project for attorney fees in a non-monetary settlement of a litigation matter. Bill Number 1758, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of $8,000 to Michael Machen for outside legal services pertaining to zoning case. Bill Number 1759, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Duquesne Light Company in the amount of $2,697.28 in settlement of a claim for damage to wooden light pole near 921 Blackador Street by a city environmental services vehicle on September 30th, 2019. Bill Number 1760, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDBG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing play area improvements by $306,100 and increasing street resurfacing by $306,100. Bill Number 1761, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, public safety facilities by $1,526,404.78 and increasing street resurfacing by $1,526,404.78. Bill Number 1762, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDBG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Carrolli Recreation Center demolition and reconstruction by $800,000. Facilities improvement, public safety facilities by $1 million. Facility improvement, recreation and senior centers by $1,83,238 and increase in street resurfacing by $2,883,238. Bill Number 1763, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 entitled Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by transferring an additional $250 to the Huel Community Development Corporation for a total of $1,500 within Council District 6 Neighborhood Needs. Bill Number 1764, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 275 entitled Providing for an Agreement and/or Use of Existing Agreement and/or Contracts and for the purchase of materials, supplies, equipment, and/or services for City Council Neighborhood Needs Program and Providing for the Payment of Costs thereof, transferring an additional $250 to the Huel Community Development Corporation in Council District 6 Neighborhood Needs. Total cost of all projects is not to exceed $130,802.79.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1765, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant agreements to receive grant fundings from the Pennsylvania EMS Provider Foundation to purchase emergency ventilators and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $7,267 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1766, Resolution Providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Shallow Creeks Kennel in the amount of $8,500 for the purchase of 1K9 for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Bill Number 1767, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice to receive monies from the 2018 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program and further authorizing legitimate expenditures by the Bureau of Police for purchases authorized by the grant agreement and for the execution of agreement or contracts for any equipment or services required in connection with the execution of said grant. Said agreement or contract shall not exceed $113,702. Bill Number 1768, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice to receive monies from the 2019 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and further authorizing legitimate expenditures by the Bureau of Police for purchases authorized by the grant agreement and for the execution of agreement and/or contracts for any equipment or services required in connection with the execution of said grant. Said agreement or contract shall not exceed $52,000. Bill Number 1769, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Cortico and the Young Men and Women's Hebrew Association and Irene Kaufman Centers and related subscription agreement with Cortico for the creation by Cortico of a wellness application to provide mental health and wellness services to employees of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, Bureau of Fire, and Bureau of EMS and their families and further pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code accepting a donation of funds from the JCC with a value of $67,500 to pay for the initial one-year term of such agreements for the wellness app. Bill Number 1770, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of the Department of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice to receive monies from the 2020 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and further authorizing legitimate expenditures by the Bureau of Police for purchases authorized by the grant agreement and for the execution of agreements for any equipment or services required in connection with the execution of said grant. Said agreement shall not exceed $88,000. Bill Number 1771, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of Public Safety, and the Chief of Police on behalf of the city to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice to receive monies from the 2021 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program and further authorizing legitimate expenditures by the Bureau of Police for purchases authorized by the grant and for the execution of agreements or contracts for any equipment or services required in connection with the execution of said grant. Said agreement shall not exceed $88,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1772, Resolution Authorizing the City to extend a contract or agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television for public access television services by extending the term of the agreement until September 30th, 2021. Bill Number 1773, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 376 which authorized the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or amendments with Planet Technologies for essential support and maintenance services for the continued operation of the city's SAAS email and data file collaboration. An amendment is to rectify the difference of $15,700 between amount in the contract and amount in legislation due to the use of emergency COVID legislation in 2020. Bill Number 1774, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Monday.com an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments at a cost not to exceed $80,000. Bill Number 1775, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a long-term license agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for a unified fiber internet connectivity network to license dark fiber infrastructure to connect 131 sites for a term of 10 years at $1,016,028 per year at a total cost not to exceed $10,169,280.
Thank you. And we have Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
I'm President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1776, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into many grant reimbursement agreements for the 2021 Love Your Block Program at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Bill Number 1777, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city and providing operating support for these groups and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $460,000. and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Bill number seventeen seventy-eight, resolution amending resolution number four eighty-seven, entitled, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy-two, adopting and approving the twenty thirteen capital budget and the twenty thirteen CDBG program and approving the twenty thirteen through twenty eighteen capital improvement program by reducing various CDBG line items by seven million thirty-two, seven thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents and increasing demolition of condemned buildings by seven thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents by correcting a J.D. Edwards job number.
And Councilman Wilson?
Motion away of the rule aid on seventeen seventy-eight.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill will appear on tomorrow's agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one appointment to the Land Bank Board of Directors.
Also, President Kell Smith presents bill number seventeen seventy-nine, resolution appointing Councilman Bobby Wilson to the Pittsburgh Land Bank Board of Directors for a term to expire November first, twenty twenty-four. This appointee will serve in a seat designated for council that was vacated by Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, whose term expired and resigned. Bill number seventeen eighty, communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Finance for Deborah Gims and the Department of Park and Recreation for Ed Yulrich, per the acting pay policy revised in June of twenty eighteen.
Motion to approve on seventeen seventy-nine and seventeen eighty.
A motion to approve. I think the motion's read, receiving file, was it?
We have to approve the appointment, correct?
Well, the communication is a read, receiving file and the promotion, I mean, yeah.
So can we have a motion to read, receive and file for the communication?
Yes, seventeen eighty.
Seventeen eighty is to read, receive and file.
Thank you.
As such.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then for the, we have a motion to approve?
Yep, so moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, appointments approved. Congratulations, Councilman. And we'll now move on to any unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Saying none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. There being no final action, we move on to motions and resolutions. And I have, Councilman Wilson, you have bill seventeen eighty-two, Small Game of Chance for Stonewall Alliance.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Let me read it.
What do we need?
We'll get back to this, ma'am.
I'm sorry, what did she say?
We'll read it.
Okay, please read it.
Bill number seventeen eighty-two, now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Stonewall Alliance as a civic and service organization within the appropriate context of the Pennsylvania Small Game of Chance Act as amended.
Thank you. The motion to approve in a second. All in favor? Do we have?
They're moved.
Second. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Small Game of Chance is approved. I think it's the first one I've done. Meeting announcements, tomorrow, Wednesday, August twenty-fifth at ten a.m., council will hold their standing committees meeting. Speaker registration closes at nine a.m. Wednesday morning. Also, tomorrow afternoon at one thirty p.m., council will hold a cable cast public hearing on bill seventeen thirteen as it relates to renaming the Fineview Park Ballpark to the Kenneth W. Kenny Mitten Senior Memorial Ballfield. Speaker registration closes at eleven thirty Wednesday morning. Councilman, are you cheering that?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. And to speak at these meetings, please register on this council meeting webpage to fill out a signup form in its entirety. You may also call the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight or email the city clerk's office at PittsburghPA.gov. Also, council members, we will be working on the Pittsburgh Public School and the City Council Districts reapportionment commissions. The reapportionment of the City Council Districts, nine members to serve, one appointed by each council district representative. The school district reapportionment commission will consist of seven members, three of which will be appointed by council. The commission must be formed by September thirtieth, so please submit your names, the names of your nominees, no later than the end of business day on September seventh. So please pay attention to that. Also, there are four seats on the Citizens Police Review Board that have impending terminations, term, sorry, expirations, two of which are vacant. The seats are as follows. Council seat one, seat is vacant, needs a successor to complete term ending at ten thirty-one twenty-one. We need three nominees. Council seat number two, law enforcement professional only, term expires ten thirty-one twenty-one. Reappointment request by council to term eleven one twenty-one to ten thirty-one twenty-five. Council seat number four, term expires ten thirty-one twenty-one. Reappointment request by council to term one, eleven one twenty-one to ten thirty-one twenty-five. And mayoral seat number five, seat vacant due to resignation, needs a successor to complete the term ending ten thirty-one twenty-one. We need three nominees. Also, city council is required to provide a total of six nominees. There are three council subcommittees that have been created containing three members of each council in in each area. Please work together to submit your two names from each group. If you have not done so by now, please submit the names to the city clerk office, city clerk by the end of business day on Friday, August twenty-seventh, so that the names can be introduced by way of resolution. There's a lot going on there, so if you need any, if you have any questions, you can call myself or Madam Clerk who knows a lot about it. She did a lot of reading on all this. But we are beginning the reapportionment process for city council and for the school district. So there's a lot to be said, but is there anything from members? I also want to thank, I also want to thank people for helping us through a lot of stuff that we've been, we've gone through since we've been on break. And I'll get to that at the end of this, but there's a lot of people we all have to thank for helping us get us through this pandemic and to this point. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross?
Appreciate it. Sorry to be here with you remotely. Good to see you all. So I, I was listening and trying to take notes quickly on all of those announcements about appointments. Did I hear you say, you just, you just read to us the seats that need to be appointed for CPRB, but the appointments have to be in Friday? And then you said if you hadn't done so already. I, I'm sorry that I have not seen any requests for appointments. Is that because I, I was trying to listen, but you went really quickly. Do I not have an appointment to make? Is my seat not empty or something? Because I did not see any communication, so I apologize if there was something that you sent to me.
We are, Councilwoman, so I think part of it is that we started later, but the appointments were expired long before we took our break. So I think that we're just trying to catch up on some of the things that we missed.
Okay. Did, if, if the Madam Clerk or yourself would resend the request for the appointment, I would appreciate it because I, I, I was not aware until just now.
It's good to do. Will we send that and will we send, we'll send the information for all the reapportionment stuff too?
I don't believe that there was any mailings about the reapportionment. So I don't think there's anything to resend there.
It was sent to me, so we're going to re, we're going to.
I have asked about it several times.
We're going to send it to members.
So there's an email that was sent out August sixteenth to all members.
Thank you.
About reapportionment?
Well, about the CPRB appointments, so.
Have you sent something about reapportionment before that I didn't see, madam?
Not the reapportionment, the, the, the appointments to the CPRB board, so the reapportionment announcements are very new. We're just getting you ready for those. But the CPRB board, that information went out in August, August eighteenth, you should have an email as well. It was mailed to each of you from the CPRB review person herself, mailed individually.
And an email was sent to.
She mailed, she mailed a physical letter from, from Beth. Beth sent that out like July seventh.
It's difficult because we're trying to catch our mail.
Maybe at the office, hard mail at the office, and then an email from the eighteenth. Got it. I will look for those. Appreciate. You're, you're filling me out. Appreciate it.
Councilman Kraus?
Thank you. Madam President, not looking to complicate matters. The bill that I asked to waive the rules on, which is seventeen fifty-four, which allows for dynamic pricing hours to be determined by our city treasurer, was signed by members, and I thank you very much and I appreciate your support on that. Would I complicate matters by asking to recess this meeting so that when it's taken under consideration tomorrow, we can then re-up this meeting and final vote?
We're fine with it.
You don't have to recess the meeting. You can final vote it tomorrow. Just waive rules and final vote it tomorrow.
Because it's an interim approval. It's already been approved. I'm almost kind of confused why it's on the agenda, but it's been a very long time since we've done an interim.
But the interim is like interim, you know, until we can get it on the agenda, the agenda, so that's why.
Under the advice of Madam Clerk, we could just waive rules and final vote it tomorrow. I don't want to complicate matters. That's just fine. And then may I have the floor?
Yes, Councilman.
I, I too, you know, there are so many people that we have to thank for so many, many things. And, you know, the last couple weeks, you know, we've had some challenges in the South Side neighborhood and some related to public safety, some related to infrastructure, some related to building collapse and so forth and so on, but it's, it's in those times when you realize the quality of people that we employ here in the city of Pittsburgh. And, and so, you know, from Chief Gilman to, to the mayor, to Public Safety Director Hisrich, Chief of Police Schubert, Darryl Jones, our Chief of Fire, B.B., our P.L.I., PennDOT, our state police, Senator Jay Costa, State Representative Jessica Benham, and I'm going to forget people, and I don't want to, our, our local law enforcement in Zone Three, Commander John Fisher, all of the rank and file of three that have put in a lot of overtime, especially when Carson Street was closed for those number of days. And so I probably forgot somebody, and I'm sorry that if I did. Public Works cleanup, every, everyone, everyone has stepped up in very, very difficult times to, to assist, and I just want to personally thank them for, for what it is that they do and, and recognize just how very, very skilled our city employees are and how dedicated they are, especially in times of trouble, so.
Thank you, Councilman, and I, I'm going to add to the list as I did last week, that you have been such a champion in making sure that something happens there and, and trying to prevent a lot of things that did happen. So I just, I'm going to acknowledge you and your work and your leadership, and I think with your time spent on council, you've taught us all a lot, and so I just want to thank you for that.
That's very kind of you, Madam President. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just, just for clarity, if you wanted to, there's no reason to, to take, you can take this on the final action today if there's no expected discussion about it.
If members sign, if you.
If members, if you want to waive the rule.
No, that would be fine, yeah. It's, so just, just for public edification and explanation, it is, it is the only dynamically priced parking zone in the city of Pittsburgh is the South Side Parking Enhancement District. And so what this permits us to do, and only us to do, and no other, no other meter in the city is affected by this, but it permits us to collect revenues from six p.m. to midnight on Sunday nights. Many of you know the challenges that we're facing in these Carson Street right now, and one of them is just cleaning up afterwards. And we have had, we've had losses because of pandemic in parking revenue that we've been able to collect. We probably lost about a hundred thousand dollars that goes towards paying for the clean team, which I'm proud to say are unionized employees with healthcare benefits and full-time employment. We have three on the street. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we collect, but Sunday has become probably the most impactful night of the week. And, and so this permits us to collect parking revenue to be able to have our clean team on the street Monday morning to be able to clean up the residuals of, of our, our participants, let's call it that. So I appreciate everyone assisting and helping us to. We all talk about safe neighborhoods and how important cleanliness is to safe neighborhoods, and these are totally connected one hundred percent in, in the work that we're accomplishing in, in the South Side. So I appreciate member support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So did you want to vote for this?
Yeah, we do a roll call, do we not?
Yes, do a waiver.
So I'll motion to waive the rules to take final action on, forgive me, bill seventeen fifty-four.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman, Madam Clerk, can you roll call?
Okay, okay. So, so we have a pending motion on the floor of the waiver to, so we'll withdraw those and then come back and do a waiver of the rules to take final action. Yeah, so right now we have an open motion to.
So I, so we'll draw my, my.
Doctor, you made a motion to, to have it appear on tomorrow's agenda.
Oh, okay, that, got you. Yes, so that I will, I will remove the motion to waive the rules to have seventeen thirty-two on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
And to take final action.
Yeah, and may I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, not due to, roll call vote? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to waive the rules to take final action today on seventeen thirty-two.
Yeah, and that's a roll call vote.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, and it is roll call. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. No, thank you for getting us through that. Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Caldwell.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
It will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you. Anything else from members?
Madam President?
Yes, Strasburger.
Hi, good morning. I'm looking at all of you there envious that you're all in person and I'm not, but I wanted to provide an explanation for that. With transmission of COVID still very hot in our county and with a young child in my household who is unvaccinated and probably will not be able to be vaccinated for quite some time, attending childcare, now is not the right time for me to come back into the office and same with my staff. So we will not be coming into the office for quite some time until this latest spike in COVID is under control in this county. There are eight hundred cases this last weekend, and like I said, transmission is, is higher than it's been in a really long time, much to everyone's, you know, increasing disappointment. But I, I'm ready to be back in person. I'm eager to. We just need to wait till it's the right time. And I also just wanted to take this time to, well, let me just say back up for a second and say that I respect everyone's individual decisions. Everyone has different factors that they need to take into consideration, and I have my own. So I'm not placing judgment on anyone at all. But I do want to take this time to also use the bullet point for one moment and sort of empathize with parents who are, have, have school-aged children, just not me, but others out there who are incredibly worried, frustrated beyond their breaking point right now after this past year and a half, sending, getting ready to send their child back to school without, what they feel oftentimes is without the protection that they're, that they desire, that they need, that they would hope for in the schools. So I really just want to take this opportunity to say that I'm continuing to urge every level of government, whether it's school board, the PPS, whether it's the county, or whether it's the state, to do everything they can, including mask mandates and including vaccine mandates. I know that's controversial to say in a lot of circles, but we have to get this under control, and the best way to do that is through mask mandates and through vaccine mandates to the extent possible. City of Pittsburgh, it's questionable as to whether we have that power. I know that there are a lot of things that our department is exploring, but we really do need to rely on other local governments. So I just wanted to take this moment to urge and to. So I just wanted to take this moment to urge and to lobby our other levels of government to take that action. It's incredibly important, and it would make, um, a whole lot of people, including parents of school-aged children, feel a whole lot better about sending their kids back to school. Thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? So with that said, I just want to thank all the people that helped us get through, um, this past year, but in also in our return. I want to thank all the employees of the city of Pittsburgh who have done a tremendous job and kept this city running during very difficult and challenging times, including, um, the mayor's office and city council and your offices. Um, but I also want to thank our clerk's office, who's been amazing, setting everything up, getting things moving, but working with our IMP department, David Finer and his team, doing an amazing job, um, with some of the things, uh, in terms of technology. I want to thank our budget office, our three-one-one, um, the administration, the clerk's office, uh, and all employees of the city of Pittsburgh. There's just so many to thank. But I just want people to realize how many people, including our sergeant-at-arms, who held the ship down here when we were not here, um, you did an amazing job. Thank you. And, um, and, I mean, we know we have the best clerk's office around. I mean, they're just amazing. And so I just, uh, without them, without IMP, without all them working together, we would not have made it through this year, and we definitely would not have been serving our constituency the best that we could. So I want to thank you all for all your work. With that said, Councilwoman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President.
Oh, and council members, I want to thank all of you. I don't know if I said that.
Uh, it's just our job.
You do it well.
You know, Madam President, uh, you know, you left you, your, you left you out of the mix.
Oh, God.
And, um, uh, it's, you know, it's important to say I have some sense of the level of responsibility that you're carrying, especially at a very, very difficult time, which I never had that challenge. But you have the, the weight of the office and the challenge of, of, uh, of COVID uh, through your entire term. And, uh, and so I just, we collectively want to recognize your leadership and, um, uh, through very, very difficult times and, um, uh, keeping us, uh, keeping us all on track and getting us back here safe and sound.
And I want to thank all the members because, you know, Dormwell, you helped me through everything, and I still mess up all the time, but I can tell you I'm here and my heart's right, and I just want to, um, continue to serve the people with the way that we, the best we can. So thank you all for everything you've done and your leadership and your mentorship and your hard work, all of you, and your families, your families. We intruded upon your homes.